Shall I call the meeting to order, please?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being part of our first virtual Board of Education meeting in Egg Harbor Township. So I'd like to formally call the meeting to order and at this time, ask our business administrator, Ms. Anaya, to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. On Friday, April 17th, virtual instruction for this meeting was posted on our website and social media.
Thank you, may we have roll call.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes, here.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay, at this time, uh, we are going to salute the flag. After we do so, I would like to have a moment of silence for all those who we have lost and all those who are suffering from the COVID-19 virus. Can we please all stand and salute the flag which will appear on your screen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. At this time, we'd like to go over some information about this virtual meeting. We want to thank the community and the board for the patience as we work through this new virtual board meeting as part of our response to the Governor's Stay-at-Home Executive Order Number 107. To call in and ask questions or make a comment, please dial 609-653-0100, extension 1417 during the public comment portion of the meeting. Please do not leave a voicemail for public comment as it will not be received. Continue to call until you reach a live operator or moderator. And due to call volume, this may require several attempts to call in. And to please anticipate a 30-second delay for the broadcast to reach the stream. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Board President.
Thank you very much, Chandra. Uh, I just want to open with some very brief remarks before we start our superintendent's report. We are faced with a very difficult and unprecedented time. The information and the guidance that we're receiving about how to keep our schools running through the COVID-19 crisis changes daily, if not hourly. There is some good news in Egg Harbor Township, and that is our students are continuing to learn. And that's thanks to the great faculty and staff we have here in Egg Harbor Township. So I want to say some thank yous. I want to thank Dr. Gruccio and Ms. Anaya for their leadership. I want to thank our teachers, our parays, and our IT professionals, everyone who is making virtual learning possible. Education continues in Egg Harbor Township. I want to thank our cafeteria workers, bus drivers, security guards, who have been providing meals to the students who are in need of them. I want to thank all of our faculty and staff, everyone, those who have helped to provide the support and guidance that our students need. We've been providing Chromebooks as needed, we've been providing advice and guidance, and I want to take this opportunity to say to anyone viewing, if there's anything we can do for you, please contact us and we'll do our best. We're here tonight as a board to do our part to see that learning continues. However, all of us understand that these are difficult times economically as well. We know what's going on in the world, the nation, the state, the county, and in our township. So we're here for you and we're here to listen to you. As I said at prior meetings, we're EHT strong, we will make it through this. Thank you for being here. I'm now going to turn this over to Dr. Gruccio, who is going to give her report.
Good evening, everyone, and hello. Nice to see everyone again and welcome to our first virtual work session. I believe the last time we were all together was the first day of closure. We were all in the boardroom, all spaced out and entering unknown territory. Um, I'd like to begin as well echoing Mr. Castellano in thanking the Egg Harbor Township School Community, our teachers, staff, students, Board of Education, administration, and our parents for making a quick transition to virtual teaching and learning. Um, I want to thank everyone for being flexible regarding changes that we have made along the way and for understanding that county and state directions, and understandably so, are constantly changing as the situation moves forward. Um, this is certainly new territory for all of us. I feel like I went to bed one night and woke up into the future, but I sit here proud as a proud superintendent, knowing that I'm surrounded by such dedicated professionals who are not only innovative and passionate, but are absolutely love and care for the students of Egg Harbor Township, and that's a great feeling to have. Um, I'm going to give a quick update on things that we're doing during this emergency closure of our school buildings, and I emphasize that because our schools are not closed. Um, education is going on and we're very proud and confident to know that virtual teaching and learning is occurring PK to 12. Um, each week we are distributing over 10,000 meals to families in need. Um, we've loaned approximately 600 Chromebooks to our students. We've offered professional development to our teachers and parents on the virtual tools that we're using. We're providing social and emotional learning and related services to our schoolchildren and families, and um, I emphasize here that we have supports for you. So if there's anything that's needed, please let us know because we are looking to become even more innovative as we are redesigning the norm. Um, with all that said, as Mr. Castellano said before me, if there's anyone, a parent or a student that's having difficulty with any aspect of virtual learning, technology, internet connections, lessons, or having access to food, please let us know. I urge you to reach out to a teacher, a counselor, or the building principal, and someone will assist you. Knowing your concerns allows us to be better at what we do, and we want everyone to feel comfortable as possible during this time. Quick highlights, Mr. Castellano, if I could just have two more seconds about school district happenings. Uh, this week I did put out a weekly newsletter, letter with the help of Mr. Santilli and central office staff. Um, we will continue to do that on Mondays for the community, for the Board of Education, and for our teachers and students, and highlighted in that some of the things that we're proud of, particularly the Pledge of Allegiance that happens every, every day, and um, our social media posts that involve acknowledgements and announcements. They can be found on Facebook and Twitter and our website. And our latest today is that our 2017 softball team, they were state champions in 2017, and in 2020, they were voted the Atlantic City Press Best High School Team. So thank you to everybody who voted. Uh, we were on a mission to be champions. Um, yeah. We've also been in contact with middle school and high school principals and administration regarding end-of-the-year activities, such as awards, the prom, and graduation, and I know those things are on people's minds and rightfully so. Um, we are working on ideas, but we're also looking towards the Governor's speech on May 15th to give us more clarity as to how things will pan out. So right now, we're working on Plans A, B, C, D, and A, right? Um, and just in from the high school, um, the high schools will honor the class of 2020, that'll be tomorrow night, it will start at 8:00 PM, 20 minutes of lights, and the high school stadium will be lit in honor of our class of 2020s. Um, we all know that there is a curfew in effect and we'll be capturing all that on, on video, and we will repost on our social media. So there's some of the great things that I'm proud of, and I thank everybody for not only their, their concerns, but their efforts in making us hashtag EHT proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio, as always, for an excellent report and the, the great job that you and all the staff are doing. Um, unfortunately, our student reps are not with us tonight, we missed them. I, I hope that they're tuning in and following along. Uh, these meetings, though, by nature are a bit streamlined from our normal meetings. Uh, our next item of business is to move into finance and operations, and I'm going to ask if there are any administration updates for the board and public.
Yes, there are, thank you, Mr. Castellano. At this time, I'd like to highlight where we are in the 2021 budget process. Uh, we have had several meetings presenting the 2021 budget to the board and to the community. Um, these presentations can be found online under Board of Education and the submenu Budget. The next steps in the process include the budget hearing, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, April 28th, at 7:00 PM. Uh, once the budget is passed, the Township Clerk and the Atlantic County Division of Taxation certify the tax levy certification, and then the Governor is set to review the Treasurer's Report for anticipated state revenue for the, for the rest of fiscal year of 1920 on May 22nd. After that, we're looking for New Jersey State Aid to be verified by August 25th. Regarding the finance and operations update during COVID crisis, um, the Business Office Staff has been working from home for the first two weeks and has since transitioned into a hybrid schedule of working in the office and at home. We do have two new hires beginning May 1st to have already started transitioning. Um, the Food Service Department, as Dr. Gruccio highlighted, has been serving an average of 10,000 meals a week for the three distribution centers, as well as transportation, making rounds into the community. Uh, the Transportation Department is still looking to hire drivers to support the increased need for full-day kindergarten, as well as bringing more runs in-house versus using contracted drivers. Uh, we encourage you to please apply online, tell your neighbors, and at this time, our drivers are at home, mechanics and office staff are preparing our fleet for the, our return. The Facilities Department also supports the food service operation and has been working a modified schedule over the past month. Um, this week, we have staff at home, and we joke about the calm before the storm. This time being taken off is to reflect on the upcoming tasks of reopening schools, deep summer cleaning, as well as organizing the movement of classroom and spaces to implement full-day kindergarten. And we cannot express how much we appreciate the hard work happening every day to keep the business of schools open. Um, regarding this agenda, just some highlights for you. Overall, this agenda has the routine action, but I'd like to highlight some donations that we've received during this closure. The Pellegrini Family and Sea Canvas Company has donated face shields for our Food Service Department. Chick-fil-A has donated 770 entree gift cards for our families. And the Community Food Bank, along with Cooper Levinson, through the Let Us Eat Please Grant, has also provided food vouchers during our spring break closing. It was much appreciated for our residents. Regarding tuition and transportation contracts on this agenda, students still attending the schools and the jointures that are being approved will be modified based on actual school days open. On the agenda, you will also see Year 4 of 5 of the ASPIRE Grant, funding for the Miller Program for your review and approval. Overall, uh, we're looking to, we will be having another committee meeting on May 5th is our next scheduled meeting. And that's the update from finance. Any questions?
Mr. President, can I say something? This is Marita.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want, I want to let you know that I've received numerous calls from the community about the finances. Um, I'm very disappointed we didn't have a meeting. Uh, I would like to have one sometime during this week. It would be irresponsible of me not to know, uh, what our finances are actually at with the schools being closed, and also if there's going to be any impact for next year's school as far as monies that we may be getting from the state. Uh, I know that the state and Egg Harbor Township have given leeway to people paying their taxes, and I would like to know if this is going to impact us receiving our funds. So I'd like my committee to meet sometime this week, if they can make it virtually, and just go over a couple, a little few things before we have our vote next week. Thank you.
Uh, as the liaison administratively for the Finance Committee, um, I have updated the board what we do know thus far regarding the timeline for budget and the bum state aid. Um, within this week, I don't foresee the state providing any more guidance. We have been directed to continue with our budgets as planned. Um, whatever the state does decide will be a statewide impact, and if we do need to reconsider anything, we are aware that we may be discussing budget again in the summer. Um, I don't, I'm not against having a meeting, but I don't foresee having any more knowledge just in this coming week.
Thank you, Ms. Anaya.
Um, I, so first, I would just like to, um, in, in response to our report, I would also like to thank our donors very much, our community members and our businesses, uh, for, uh, helping us with those things, very much appreciated all around. Um, uh, secondly, um, discussion of the budget is a full-board matter. Any matters that need to be discussed, we, we can discuss right now. Chandra is here to answer your questions, and um, we're here to do that tonight. We're here to hear from the public tonight as well as next meeting, uh, at our budget hearing. Are there any other board members?
Um, yes, um, this is Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Castellano referenced to the donors. I'd just like to say that one of the donors, um, from Chick-fil-A that was very integral in getting, uh, the donation to, um, our community is actually a former student of Egg Harbor Township. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there. Her name is Mrs. Hunter, and she is, I believe, the PR Director at, uh, the Chick-fil-A store on Fire, I believe it's on Fire Road, um, but just wanted to say thank you. It's really nice to have, um, former students to want to give back to the community. So I just wanted to give her, um, just her, just some recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members, questions, comments on finance?
Yes, Barbara here. Um, as far as the ASPIRE Grant, Mrs. Anaya, is that affected because we're not in session or will we still get the same amount?
So the update we received from the state just on Monday or yesterday, um, is basically for this year we're running right now, they're asking for innovation within the program, and our director has submitted, um, to Mr. Santilli and myself, her implementation that she can incorporate beginning sometime in May over the summer to do virtual innovation using, um, Zoom or Chrome or Google or that kind of a platform to still provide, um, you know, innovative STEM-related activities for students. So that's where they've modified it going into next year. Uh, we are allotted $500,000 a year for five years, so that doesn't change. Um, it's just a matter of how we deliver the grant. Uh, this particular grant runs September through August, so this summer is still part of last year's monies. Um, it'll be actually next year, starting in October, for a program that you're actually approving on this agenda, and she is going with her budget as, as if we're open for the all of next year. Um, but if we aren't, then it would again be modified to a virtual type of a setting.
Okay. I have another question, Mr. Castellano. Um, since this is the time to talk about the budget, has any discussion been about perhaps taking the four and a half cents of the increase to the public with finances the way they are in the public? Are we still going with the budget the way it was, four and a half cent increase to the taxpayers?
I'm gonna- Right now, it's, um, two, it's, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, I was just gonna-
So right now- Okay, we're all working through this virtual stuff. Thank you, Mr. Castellano. Yes. So, um, right now, as is, um, as of the last board meeting, and what was approved by the county office, is a budget going to cap, which is really about two cents of new money for 2020. So that is, um, the current budget as it stands. If any decision would be made, it would be at this board level, it would not be something we would just change. So as of the last meeting, um, that we've had and going into, um, our budget hearing next week, as it stands right now, it is the budget, um, that we have since approved and discussed.
Well, since we are, we're saving money by not being in session in the buildings, um, is there, we, we really need to do something for the taxpayers because they're not going to be able to afford to live here. They already couldn't, and now there's a lot of people that aren't working. Um, I just think that they need to be taken into consideration as far as formulating what we're going to do, and if we have money that we're saving, can that be put towards next year's budget?
So you made a couple of good points there. I'll just respond based on what I've been discussing with several board members, committee members, and our staff. Um, this year, because we still have to pay staff as if we were still in school, based on the Governor's Executive Order, as well as paying contractors who were, um, with the understanding if we were open would have been paid anyway, um, although I am going to be negotiating with contractors to hopefully have some savings, there really isn't going to be much savings outside of anticipated possibly utility savings, running on day shift, not two shifts. Um, if we did in fact have that sort of savings, um, it would be going towards the 21, 22 budget. Not necessarily the 21 budget that we're proposing now. Regarding impact to taxpayers, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, one of-
I was following up with your, with the second part of your question of impact to taxpayers.
I thought you were done. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
Just the second half, it was your question about impacted taxpayers was, um, it is very tough times, and we did speak, um, to the Board President and Dr. Gruccio when I have been speaking, um, we are very aware, uh, we have a budget as it's presented. Um, and basically, we looked at, we can cut in order to talk about the four, um, four and a half cents, we would be cutting about two, over $2 million of our budget for the average two thousand-dollar household to seven dollars, $48 really. So we looked at the impact to the households, although it is, um, not minimal by any means, $50 is $50. The impact to the education of our students is much more significant, um, of a loss. So at this point, we were moving forward with the budget as proposed, um, but definitely, any questions anybody has?
You, you had said about still having to pay contractors. Would Insight be one of those contractors that we would still have to pay even if we're not using their, their manpower?
So Insight specifically being one of our biggest contracts ever since the executive order was passed, I have been on the phone with them daily. Uh, we are in current negotiations, and once, uh, we get to more justification for their request, I will be bringing something to the board. It may be next week, it may not be till next month, um, but they contractually were expecting money, but it is in the executive order, the whole purpose is to cover payroll costs and, um, direct costs related to their overhead. Um, so it's not anticipated to be the full contract that we would have normally spent with them, um, but we do still have some Insight subs working, and we do know they have some fixed overhead costs. So we're in the middle of, um, going through some of that, but there will be some savings with Insight, um, but it's not the millions of dollars that we're looking for.
But you'll have those figures for us before we vote on the budget next week? On, on, on any savings of what you're anticipating is what I'm asking.
It's very hard to anticipate savings when I'm still actively negotiating with contractors. Um, I will let you know where I am, you know, where we are as, as a board, um, next week before we vote on the budget, um, but it's not to say that, you know, you want to not go to cap or to say it's not a four and a half cent increase. We're looking at two and a half million dollars, and again, in this year's budget, that would go towards the 21, 22 budget, not necessarily the budget we're about to go into.
Ms., excuse me, I'm sorry, I had a quick question. You said, um, two, two and a half million dollars, Ms. Anaya?
Two and a half million dollars is if you want taxpayers to have absolutely no change to their tax bill, uh, as far as the school tax rate, meaning no impact at all, your bill is exactly the same as it was year to year.
But that would be for what school year again? Just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly for the two-
Uh, the, the question was to cut four and a half cents out of the 2021 budget you're about to vote on next week.
Okay.
So in order to cut that for next week, you would have to cut two and a half million dollars out of the 2021 budget, which is going to be voted on.
Yes, so that's why I wanted to say how that two and a half million dollar cut, how, where would, where would the cuts take place and how would it impact, um, students, staff, or you know, what, what are we looking at?
Uh, I can speak to that, um, Dr. Gruccio. Um, looking at making a cut that drastic, you know where, um, the, the expenses are, and that's in, um, um, personnel and, and health benefits, so, um, we would look to be, um, most likely cutting staff. Um, I explained in one of the budget presentations that the full-day kindergarten, um, process was, um, involving, uh, condensing classes and becoming more efficient in grades, um, 1, 2, and 3, and what that did was, um, produce the need to move teachers from those classrooms into the proposed full-day kindergarten. So, um, this would be a drastic go-to-back to the drawing board and look at what those cuts, um, could possibly be, but I would tell you right now, um, we're, we're looking at, at personnel, and that we did share, um, before.
And with that, so we say far as cutting personnel, um, then that brings me to the, it brings me to one of, I think, our, our biggest, um, programs that we're looking to implement, which is the full-day kindergarten. Would it, would it look like it would be cuts in that, not, not having it, or would it be cuts in, you know?
Correct. Correct. Um, we wouldn't, we need those teachers that we were taking from, um, grades 1, 2, and 3 to be placed in the kindergarten program. That was all part of our plan, um, and so we can get down to how many, um, staff that we were going to advertise for, which was part in the budget process. Um, Dr. Charlton had shared that piece. So to answer your question, they go in, they go hand in hand. So if the one is cut, then you're cutting, you're getting, you're cutting staff.
But we would, it would be more cutting the kindergarten program or the program, but not the, those teachers will go back to, um-
No.
They're, no, okay. Okay, it'll be cut.
Um, I have some questions.
Sure, Mrs. Byrd, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this all correctly, um, and please correct me if I'm wrong. So we have the executive order from the Governor that is requiring us as a school district to continue to pay our employees, uh, what they would be making if we were going to the traditional brick-and-mortar school.
Actually, Kristin, can you jump in? It's actually a part of a law that was passed.
Okay. So it's- What was it, S., what was the law number?
It is A3904.
A39, thank you. So we have a law that is requiring us to pay, and, um, so we're not really getting savings there, except that we may be able to renegotiate some of our contracts, um, but at this time right now, it's as if we were in school still. Okay, so I understand that, thank you. And should we not go to cap? We would be saving per household approximately, I think, was it a per $200,000 household? I'm not sure, about $50. However, if we do go to cap, then we would be able to retain employees and go have full-day kindergarten. Did I hear that correctly? However, if we do go to cap, then we would be able to retain employees and go have full day kindergarten. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, so when, if this budget does get approved, say next week, does that prohibit us from later, once we have actual statistics on the economic uh impact that this pandemic has had? Are we able to then readjust our budget in a way that meets the needs of our community, should the community want us to do so? Because I and other board members, we all are feeling very concerned that our community members may be suffering through this time. They, they aren't working. We live in a community that relies on tourism. We don't have that right now. Um but I'm also thinking about the families that have to go back to work at some point and they need their children to be educated. And so the economic impact on them of having to pay a thousand dollars a month for a private state kindergarten would be better served than keeping it for their household and investing it into our community. That seems like that would um trickle around the community a little bit better, but I could be wrong. But my, I guess my main question is, if we vote this budget, does that mean we cannot adjust things later? Thank you.
With changes in funding, they will let us make changes as a, as needed.
Uh Mr. Price, I have a question, please.
Sure, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, during some of the discussions we had at the meetings, um when we talked about all these things, um it was brought up, what would this cost us if we did not go to cap? Is there any changes in that? Somebody had brought up a figure of around six million dollars at that point. So my question at this time is, what would the cost be if we don't go to cap?
To be specific, cost for which portion, Mr. Price? I'm not sure what you're asking.
The overall budget, there was discussions that we talked about and uh it, it was discussed if we didn't go to cap, it could cost us revenue if we didn't go to cap uh in regards to a state aid or something of that sort.
So if we don't go to cap, it hurts us in future years. That maybe that what you're referring to? So basically, every levy year is based on the previous year. So it's a, it's a percent, two percent increase on a previous year's budget. So is that what you mean, future potential loss?
Yes, what would be the potential loss if, in the event that we don't go to cap?
So if our levy is held flat going into them next year, you've lost already a million and a half from this point forward in perpetuity. Um that base will then not be increased by two percent as well. So depends on, if that impact goes on forever, basically, by not going, by not increasing the levy this year.
So essentially, we would just be continuing a problem then as far as um as far as taxes are concerned, if, if we.
Correct.
Couldn't go to cap.
That's correct.
Okay, it would just be continuing this, the um, the situation we're in. Okay, thank you.
Blauer here.
Are there any other, any other board members?
I, I just want to say that it would be very irresponsible if we don't take the taxpayers into consideration when, when looking at this budget and any funding differences or wha- whatever way it falls as far as uh savings or funding, we still need to consider our taxpayers. That's all I have to say.
I certainly agree. We need to take everything into consideration. Uh one other amount in addition, uh Chandra is by not having full day kindergarten, uh we immediately forego any grant money that we had hoped to apply for, for preschool, which we had estimated could easily top a million dollars. So that's an additional factor. An additional factor. Uh are there other board members with uh questions or comments for uh on finance and operations?
Yes, Mr. Castellano. Marita, please. Chandra?
Yes, Mrs. Sullivan. I'll wait for you to finish.
I don't know how much of a delay I'm on. Um let me ask you this. If in fact, the, the state does not come through with the financing that we're expecting, then we can go back after we've approved this budget, we can go back in, change the budget and the taxpayers' amount will go down if in fact we do not get what we're supposed to.
I cannot speak on what will happen with which portion of the budget. If we lose any state funding, the board is approving a budget in its totality. If the total changes, we are then able to reopen our budget and reconsider changes to the budget, uh whether that's increase of tax levy or remaining it the same. If that's part is not based on tax on the state aid, it's basically once state aid changes, you reopen your budget and have discussions with your board about how to modify it.
So in fact, we could have to increase our, our tax levy quite a bit then. If we're going to bring the new programs in, we may really be hitting the constituents.
So the term called, you know, going to cap is because tax levy is capped at two percent. So even if the state were to cut aid um in August, we would still, if we are submitting a budget going to cap, that is the cap amount of a levy increase. That is the total paid, a total allowed to be increased. So if we lose, if we lose state funding, we can't ask taxpayers for more than cap. It's just, it's cap. That's why there's a tax levy cap.
Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Makes sense.
This is Mrs. Floyd. I just, uh to make a go before, I just wanted to say um that um and I'm, I'm speaking for myself and I, and I'm sure some people probably feel the same way as well. Um this, the stakeholders in the township um are at the forefront and consideration in all decisions that I think are made by board, by the board and board members. So I just don't, I just don't want anyone in the public to, to leave away, you know, go away thinking that um they're not, the taxpayers aren't considered as well as the students, staff. It's a holistic view that we take when we, you know, make decisions and this, having the pandemic come up and surprise all of us, um I think has put a shock to everyone's system. Um but at the same time, we all know that we have to consider all the stakeholders that are, you know, are going to be affected um by the decisions that we make. And un- unfortunately, sometimes it, it doesn't always, um you know, if you make a decision, there will be some people who are going to be, you know, happy with it and some that aren't. But all the stakeholders within the township are considered from the taxpayer to the student. So I just wanted to say that.
Are there any other board members with questions or comments on finance and operations, please? Okay, seeing not, seeing and hearing none, uh we're going to move to uh curriculum and I'm going to ask if administration has any updates in the area of curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. I'm going to turn to uh Mr. Santilli, who has been, we've been working together overseeing uh curriculum during this time.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio, and uh it's good to see everybody virtually. Uh just to give everyone an update. Um basically, the, the work we've been doing behind the scenes uh since our closure, um it has been phased in uh in regards to curriculum and instruction. Um some of the things you've already heard about earlier tonight, but um I'll recap briefly. Um for instance, uh we've been pushing out a lot of uh professional development. Uh we've called it lunch and learn uh over the past few weeks prior to spring break and, and um we had a, a great outpouring from our staff in order to uh be able to meet their needs, to make them more comfortable with transitioning to this uh virtual environment to meet the needs of our students. Um additionally, we've provided some uh updates to our parents as well. Uh again, to provide them resources, uh we have a series of playlists and YouTube videos to be able to support uh parents at home, everything from uh being able to create a infinite campus uh parent portal account uh to how to um really navigate Google Classroom or even a Google Meet for a live session if needed. Um some of the things we've also been continuing to push out and for us, it's, it's a matter of trying to really not just maximize time, but also maximize um the time uh on task for our students without um overwhelming. Uh we, we do still try to focus on our mission in E H T, which is embrace, engage, educate. And right now, for all of us, I think embrace is that first piece. Um so we do have a schedule uh for all the different grade levels. We have had some recent revisions um to that schedule uh since spring break, um and it's broken down through pre K to three, um four and five, grades six to eight, and then of course, high school. Uh what we typically do right now is um we have uh gotten a lot of great feedback in regards to taking that schedule on a daily basis. And we use our social media accounts, of course, to uh push that out first thing in the morning. It starts with the Pledge of Allegiance. Um we've had a great outpouring from uh our, our community and our own staff and even students in regards to the um uh, you know, recordings that we've been able to showcase. And then followed by that would be the actual schedule for the day, just to really make sure we have some uh support for our parents. Uh we know that this is a big change, um not just for our staff, but also for everyone at home. Um so we are leading with that in mind with embrace and that social emotional aspect. Um we also uh really did produce uh prior to spring break an update in regards to grading uh to make sure that we were communicating uh our expectations to our staff. Uh the first ten days of the closure, uh if you recall, there was a lot of unknowns. Uh so we started this um, I guess, journey uh with a lot of what I would refer to in the elementary grades uh with paper packets um and really just trying to monitor and provide uh supports um at home in the sense of more supplemental instruction or work. Uh and now we've transitioned into more uh time on task with instruction and true learning uh in that virtual environment. Uh coupled with that, there's going to be a, a, an additional grading memo, which is going to be out this week for our um parents. Um and then in addition to that, uh we're going to continue to follow up, as Dr. Gruccio mentioned earlier, with a lot of those frequently asked questions in regards to um where we go from here uh with uh a lot of our end of the year events, which I know everyone is, is anxious to see um what the future is going to hold as, as we are as well. Um so I think that would kind of give everyone a, a, a brief overview of what we've been working on behind the scenes. And again, just to reiterate what we've discussed earlier, if anyone has any questions, please make sure um that you feel free to reach out to us, um you know, from that parent lens uh at home, reach out to your building principals, reach out to your teachers. Um we're here for, for you during this time.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli, and may I say you're looking very dapper this evening. And uh at this time, I'm going to ask if any board members have questions or comments uh in the curriculum area. Hearing none, hearing none, we will now move uh to personnel. And again, I'll ask for administration updates in the personnel area.
Mr. Castellano, I'm going to turn um the screen over to Dr. Charlton, um our Director of Human Resources, who will give you an update um with personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio, and thank you, Mr. Castellano. Um the H R department, much like the business department, we started remotely and essential staff are now transitioning back uh into the office simply because there's personnel file information that we need to complete the day to day needs of district staff that we simply can't access uh online. But Chandra and I have been working very closely together to make sure our two staffs are very staggered um and we're well exceeding uh any federal and state guidelines with distancing, even with our essential staff. Uh but you know, things are going on in terms of leave of absence adjustments, uh student loan servicing, where they need employment verifications, mortgage applications. A lot of day to day H R office work that really we can't do remotely. Uh but I did want to update the board on two topics briefly. Uh the first one is this month, the board agenda contains non renewals. Um and with those non renewals by statute, we have to have contracts go out to staff by May fifteenth. So the plan is to make a really hard push at the end of April and get those out of the mail by Friday, May first. Even if there's post office delays, that the contracts will be uh will be in compliance with statute in terms of employees getting them on May fifteenth. Uh the other topic was summative evaluations, sometimes referred to as overall evaluations for staff. Uh I was on a call with the New Jersey Department of Ed today with Dr. Linda Ino uh from N J D O E and she was clarifying some of the information we've been getting on broadcast memos and, and got some good clarification on things that really affect our certified staff and their evaluations for the year. Uh she said, a, in quote, that the philosophy of the N J D O E is to do no harm. Uh and I believe that's our philosophy of the district as well. I'll be communicating this information to our district staff via email tomorrow, but I just wanted to give you a couple of quick highlights. Uh the first is that for tenured staff in good standing, and what good standing means is that last year, they either received a highly effective or effective rating, they will not have to go through the summative evaluation process. Okay, so they will basically not need that type of evaluation, that overall evaluation because they were an effective or higher educator last year, that's kind of what they're considered this year. Uh that includes any tenured staff that were on leaves as well this year. Non-tenured and provisionally certified staff, they will need summative evaluations. Hey, those evaluations will be done and completed by two observations that they would have had done by March eighteenth uh when we went into the COVID closure and then a summative evaluation, which will happen by phone or video conference with their supervisor or principal. So those staff members, and we have all them identified and communicated to the principals and supervisors, those that will need those summative scores because they all do get sent to the state. And that is important in terms of their employment with the state, recognizing that they are moving on satisfactorily to the next year. Uh the main thing in terms of student achievement is that regardless of the category of certified staff, no measures of student achievement will apply to anyone's evaluation in this year. So for example, an S G O, which is based on student achievement, that will not play into any certified employee's uh evaluation for this year. That's all been canceled along with the state testing. That all part been waived. So that is my report. Thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Charlton. Uh board members, any board members, questions or comments uh in the personnel area?
I just have a question real quickly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh Dr. Charlton, can you just explain uh for the non-tenured teachers? When you said there's, they would, they are required to have a summative, will it be an observation of their virtual teaching or just a communication between a supervisor?
Good question. So it would have to be their minimum two observations that they had live in person uh before March eighteenth. Those two observation scores will count together, um you know, divided by two as the summative score and then a summative conference would take place. There can't be, the state is saying that there are going to be no observations of people virtually teaching. So if, for whatever reason, like a, a non-tenured teacher joined in mid-year and only had one, the second observation would be a portfolio assessment where a teacher would show his or her supervisor, here's some of the things I've done, you know, in terms of artifacts, things I've done with the class. And then the evaluation would take place in terms of a portfolio assessment. But no observations of teachers teaching remotely will count towards achieve New Jersey. But at the same time, Dr. Reno did mention, again, with the do no harm philosophy, this isn't a reason for teachers to have to run into buildings in their classrooms and get artifacts to prove to their uh supervisors that they did this. Again, everybody's kind of taking it their word because of the situation.
Any other board members, questions or comments in the personnel area?
Um this is Mrs. Floyd. I, I have a, a question, but it was, it's more so going back to curriculum and um finance. Would you like me to wait? I, we can move on and I could ask later. It was more of a comment slash question.
Up to you, your choice.
Um I just had it, um so going back to curriculum and finance, it's kind of like a hybrid question, I guess. Um the question was a reference to um the African American history class for seniors. And I guess it kind of folds into, you know, doing different things for seniors as well. Um I know that's a class for seniors and they had a trip, I guess, planned for the African American Museum in Washington, D C. And um I know there was a donation made to that, for that particular trip. Um and I just didn't know if, if that um, if that particular, the funding, was it given directly for that trip? Or was it, is it more so something that's deposited into a general activities um account and put toward that or was it directly to um the African American uh history class for seniors?
So I can speak to the um field trip itself, um and I'd have to do more. I'll have to do some um more research where, where maybe Ms. Anaya um knows about the funding offhand. But um ultimately, I get, can tell you that, of course, with the closure, we're following along with, as you know, um the guidelines from the state. Uh in addition, we have to also, because of that. Uh, in addition, we have to also, because of that trip, um, we've been monitoring our field trips very closely. Matter of fact, um, the principals prior to break, uh, and supervisor had gone through our list of previously approved board field trips. Um, and I, I recall that there were two, two trips to Washington DC, that being one of them, um, for the end of May. Uh, at the current time, those trips have been, um, you know, postponed or canceled. Uh, depending upon what we, um, can do for, in the future, uh, we certainly are, are taking all of those things into consideration um, in regards to being able to provide that experience to the students moving forward. But at the current time, of course, um, we're not able to not just travel, uh, you know, but we have to also abide in that particular situation with, um, other states, uh, that we might be traveling to in regards to restrictions they may have, even if restrictions are lifted here in Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli. Uh, regarding the funding, unlike budget funding that expires in June, when monies are donated or grant is received for a specific purpose, it does stay with that purpose year over year. So if we're not able to make that trip this year, it could go next year. If it was for this particular group of seniors that will be graduates into next year and they'll actually be in college, if it was so specific for that, we will then give those funds, um, to organize that trip specific to those seniors. Um, but it is not like a budget in June that just expires.
And I just want, thank you for that. And, um, and I guess, because when I mentioned the donations and reference to, um, from Chick-fil-A, from, um, Alexis Hunter, who was a former student, um, I thought about Mr. Bell, who's, who's a former EHT student too. Um, and just, you know, just commend him for the work that he's doing, um, with that history class. Um, and that's kind of near and dear to my heart, just because, um, I remember when I was in high school, we um, signed a petition to get an African-American history class. So I'm just glad to see that it's, um, that it's there and part of the curriculum. So just wanted to, you know, give a shout out to Mr. Bell. Thank you.
I actually have a curriculum question too. Uh, Mrs. Uh, Floyd's comment sparked a question for me, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Sure.
Um, as far as our, uh, seniors or students taking AP classes, how, uh, how is it working with not having standardized testing? How are we making sure? I, I, I just don't know how it works. So if you could explain to me how we're making sure our students who are in those courses will get the credits that they've earned.
Students in those courses are taking, uh, the virtual classes with their teachers as well and doing as much as work possible. They will be testing. They'll have, they'll have online testing, so they will take their test.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other, um, questions or comments in the personnel area? Hearing none, we're going to move to policy, and I'll again ask administration for updates.
Okay, Mr. Castellano, I'm going to turn the, the screen over to, once again, Mr. Santilli, who is the, uh, administrative liaison for our policy committee.
Thank you, Dr. Grucho. Um, basically, we, uh, we do not have a, a report, but I want to provide an update, um, for the board. Um, under new business, um, nine point one, I would just like to, um, bring your attention to, um, that particular uh, update, uh, suspension of policies under emergency circumstances. Um, as you can see there, um, there is a resolution that has been, um, provided, um, for the board to review. Uh, and ultimately, what it comes down to is obviously that is in place due to, um, our current circumstances, um, due to the COVID nineteen closure.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have board member questions or comments?
This is Mrs. Floyd. Um, I had a, just, I guess, a quick question. I definitely, um, reached out to Mrs. Santilli later, but I just wanted to, um, maybe kind of quickly discuss, I know, um, Mrs. Sullivan mentioned about having, um, committee meeting for finance. Um, just thinking in reference to policy, I know it's not in effect at this point, but I wanted to know if, thought that maybe, I was thinking that maybe we could set up some type of meeting just to kind of go over some, some items and just to kind of see where we're going and then maybe review some things that we had in the, in the queue, far as with policies. And if the other members felt that need, those who are in the policy committee. Of course, it would be virtual.
I guess my comment, um, or my thought would be that we would anticipate sticking with our scheduled committee meeting, uh, night, which, uh, you know, which are scheduled, um, coming up very soon, the, uh, first week, first week in May, if I'm correct.
That's correct. I know with finance and ops, we plan on, I haven't talked to the full committee yet, but the plan was to schedule it virtually and have our own meeting room, um, for that particular night. And I'm assuming the other committees would work the same way through this, um, Google meets. Separately.
Is, is that, um, is that acceptable, uh, policy, uh, members?
It's fine with me. Mr. Castellano, it's fine with me, Marita.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, very, very good. Uh, so moving on from policy, uh, now we come to, um, public comment. Um, Chandra, maybe you'll walk us through the mechanics of how public comment will work. Um, I'll just talk to substances, the same as always, uh, where, um, we're going to limit our comment to three minutes. Um, the board cannot talk about personnel or litigation. And it, it's often the case that a complex question, we may need to, um, get back to you with a more detailed response. So with that, I'll, uh, let Chandra explain the, uh, mechanics of, uh, questions.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. So as you see on the screen, uh, that is the telephone number to call in for public comment. There is about a thirty-second delay for the public to see this, so we'll just hold off, um, when I get the first call. Um, it's being forwarded to me, I, which I have right now. I'm going to ask for a name and address, and then we'll put them on. Good evening. Name and address, please. Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, I just have, uh, two, or one comment, two questions. Uh, first is just a comment. So, um, just so the public understands the reason, the reason that you guys are staying tax neutral and it having an impact on the twenty twenty-two budget by four million dollars is because you're compounding the impact of tax raises on the public. To me, that's not a good, that's not being a good custodian of finances. As a board, when you're setting the expectation of a reliance on capping the public year over year and then being concerned about a lack of funds two years away. To me, this is reckless, considering we are in the throes of twenty percent unemployment, significant amount of taxpayers being stressed in bankruptcy. Uh, so my two questions, uh, one, why isn't there more savings? Uh, the maintenance and operating budget's twelve million dollars a year. Transportation budget is eight million dollars a year. So that's twenty million dollars a year that we are no longer spending a good portion of. So it's about two million dollars a month. You guys have been down for about two months now. We're probably looking at another month, month and a half outage. So just to put that into context, two million dollars a month, three-month outage, that could pay for four years of full day kindergarten without tax rates. So I'm kind of concerned why that hasn't been, uh, why we haven't gone into more detail about what those savings are. The second question is, it's just kind of a general question. Does it make sense to anyone to take on full day kindergarten when we can't even gateway our kids presently back to school? It's highly likely COVID will still be with us come September. Now you want to take up to five hundred kids full-time with potential PPE quarantine limitations and restrictions. This doesn't make any sense to me at all. Thanks.
Thank you. So I will take, um, some of that as it relates to finance and operations. Uh, the reference to the facilities and maintenance budget, as well as the transportation budget, does include salaries. I'll start with facilities and maintenance and grounds. Uh, that operation continues. We still are actively doing work orders, um, paying personnel, as well as moving forward with projects that were budgeted. Uh, that don't anticipate savings there outside of, like I said, some utilities savings, as we are running one shift instead of two. Regarding transportation, again, we are still paying for our drivers and our mechanics, still getting inspections from DMV. Uh, we do anticipate some savings, uh, with, you know, wear and tear on buses, uh, as well as, um, with wear and tear on our buses, as well as, um, gas. So there's going to be some savings. Um, we can do the best we can with anticipation. We still, at this point, don't know if we're going to be out the rest of the year or just until May fifteenth, so as we actually can do hindsight reflection on what the savings will be, but as far as anticipated, it'd be very hard to quantify.
Okay, thank you.
I do have another public comment upcoming, and they just hung up. So as the next one comes in, we'll do the same process. Name and address, please.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure, my name is Stephanie. Stephanie Clover, I'm a one oh eight Amber Court, Agarva Township.
Go ahead with your comment.
May I continue? Thank you. My concern is, I'm listening to the budget. I understand about, um, the maintenance issues, the transportation issues, the field issues, everything I've been hearing tonight. What about the issues about graduation for the students, the seniors, who went through twelve years of school and need to be recognized? I mean, it's April, it's April. So what's going to happen by June? They cut me off.
I'm still here. Hello? We're still here with listening to your comment. You still have a few minutes. Is that the end of your comment?
Pardon my, pardon my, uh, upsetness.
That's okay. Does that conclude your public comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what's going on with the seniors.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I have another one coming in.
Dr. Grucho, uh, would you like to address that one real quickly, or?
Sure, Mr. Castellano, um, I'll just repeat what I said in the beginning of the meeting, where, um, we have been, um, working with administration of the high school and the middle school, uh, discussing the end of the year events and graduation being one of them. Um, the, I know the high school administration met today and will meet, um, with, throughout the week, um, talking about ideas. They put a survey out to the se- seniors today to ask the seniors what they would like, a virtual uh, graduation ceremony to hold off in the summer or some other ideas. So we're collecting ideas. Um, and then, again, we were waiting for that May fifteenth announcement from the governor to see what the direction is. And there's plans A, B, C, and D, because will schools be open? Will schools be closed? If they're not, if they are closed, um, you know, do, do we go to virtual and when? If they're open, are there restrictions with seating, just as the Air Force Academy did, um, they spaced the, um, the students out? So we have, we have our thinking caps on, uh, we are in the process of planning. We have not forgotten the seniors. Uh, the class of twenty twenty will be honored tomorrow, starting tomorrow night and every night, um, with the lighting of the, 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 um, the stadium at the high school. So, um, you know, hopefully that answers the questions and relieve some anxiety. And I encourage you to reach out to the high school principal, um, or myself, um, if you have any other further concerns. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Grucho. We, we are very, uh, concerned uh, about our seniors, our eighth graders, uh, and all our students. And so we do have plans in place and, and we will be doing the best we can and reacting to, uh, the guidance that comes down uh, as, as soon as it's available. Um, so I, I thank you for that comment, and, uh, we share those concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. We do have somebody else in queue. Hello, name and address, please.
Herman Lee, three oh seven Allen Lane.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Yes, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. First of all, I'm not concerned about everything that's going right and going wrong, but what I can't tell you, what is working for my child at this time is Miss Mas- Masaccio, Miss Nifa, and Miss Delta, your teachers are doing very well. So I know everybody's going to tell you where everything's going wrong. I need to tell you what's going right. At this present, while the child, we have had a lot of adversities to doing everything as far as trying to educate our children. The missing, the social action in between each other. However, I think they've learned a valuable lesson that, you know, personal touch and personal conversation is a good thing, not just texting and calling and, and everything else, doing Zoom, doing Skype. But what's working well for you guys, I can't tell you, is the teachers, they do care. Miss Delta has sent at least two cards to my daughter, just say, hey, check in, how are you doing? What's going on? Look forward to seeing you tomorrow with the virtual school. So I think this is a new day, a new way of learning, and we just have to adapt to what the times are bringing to us at this time. And that's all I have to say.
I'd like to thank you for your positive comments, and, you know, we like to hear, um, you know, not only what's not working, so we can fix it, but we really appreciate, appreciate to hear what is working. And, uh, we too are proud of our teachers, um, serving our students, and, well, we love our students and we're, we're proud all, all of us to be one happy family. Um, this is tough for everyone, as we know, in our own personal homes. But when it comes to the extension to school, um, to just hear that, you know, you're appreciative and it, and things are working out for you and your family, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much for the comment. Thank you.
I have another one. Name and address, please.
It's Kathy Wazin.
Is somebody else listening? Oh, you have it in the background. Go ahead, Mrs. Wazin. Maybe if you can mute behind you.
Uh, you want me to do what?
Mute the audio behind you so we can hear you clearly. There you go. You sound good. Go ahead with your comment.
Okay. Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you are on the virtual live. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Wazin. First of all, I want to say, um, this is quite an experience and oh, wait, I can't hear what, not, Miss Anaya is saying.
You're on the virtual meeting. Nobody is speaking, just you.
Okay, um, all right. So first I want to, um, okay, I want to, um, this sounds like our classes every day. Okay. Okay. All right.
There's a thirty-second delay. If you're watching, if that's what's happening, you have to mute behind you and then go ahead and make public comment.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry if that all of that, um, I want to speak to, uh, several things, but I'm going to try to make this short. One of the areas that I am concerned about and quite aware of is everybody's situation with the coronavirus and what it's done to our economy. I don't think we are the only ones that are worried about our residents. And, um, I worry about the parents of my children. But I know one thing. I know that Agarva Township residents value education. And I know that we have struggled with trying to structure a full-day kindergarten. And we have worked very hard with, uh, meetings with the public, strategic planning meetings, discussing, having discussions, um, then re-meeting again to go over what we've then re-meeting again to go over what we've learned in the strategic planning meetings to come up with a real solid plan for full day kindergarten. So I am asking the board members to please vote in favor of this budget next week because it's important for us. And our number one goal is education. We need to educate our children. And I think the parents understand that and the parents are for full day kindergarten. Second, I want to thank the administrators for being so helpful to the teachers and staff. This has been very difficult. Some days it's, it's, you're almost on the verge of crying because you see your children, but you, you miss them. All of a sudden you get clicked off, they bounce off, they come back in. I, I absolutely take my hat off to the parents because they are persevering. They're getting their children into these meetings. They're communicating with teachers. This has been a joint effort. I think the negative of coronavirus, I can flip it to a positive that it has made such a connection between teachers and parents and teachers and children. So there's a lot of positive things that have come out of this crisis. So as I'm going to hang up now, but I just want to say that your staff is in there. We're working hard. We're trying to provide the best education we can. Please stand firm and, and vote for this budget next week so that we can add to our educational foundation with full day kindergarten and with the grant from the state full day preschool. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mrs. Wazin, for your comment and I, I did allow the time to go over because of the technical difficulties encountered at the beginning, which were at least a minute's worth of technical difficulties. So just, just for everyone going forward, but thank you very much for your comment and all that, all that you do.
We are still continuing to receive calls, so we'll hold just for a little bit. And here's one now. Repeat. Name and address, please.
Lauren Schlam, 117 East River Lane.
And go ahead with your public comment, please.
Um, first I want to say thank you to everybody for doing such an amazing job getting the online education set so fast over a weekend. I think, you know, so highly of our teachers for being able to get everything together in such a timely matter. I do want to thank you also for continuing doing the Meals for Families in Need, which I think was absolutely wonderful as well. I do have one concern. I will have a positive and then a concern. My daughter is a senior at the high school and like the gentleman earlier said, he has nothing but positivity, you'd say, about our teachers there. My daughter has done every single day she logs on to check in with her teachers. She has Mrs. Delta also who has done cards for her who to check in on our family. Just very positive about them. My son is in middle school. He just has work. But every day when he goes to log in, there's not only the teacher there to check in with him. I didn't know if that was something that was made like a mandatory thing at that level. Because at the high school level, they seem to be making it a mandatory thing. At the middle school level, it's like, ah, here's your work. You can check in if you need help. I didn't know if, you know, there's a way to make it a mandatory thing. I think some kids aren't logging on to talk to the teachers or to get their work because it's not made mandatory. That was really my only negative comment, but again, I want to thank everybody for everything they're doing and I look forward to hear what the plan is for our seniors because I do have a graduate this year. So that is you know, a pretty big deal for our family. But, but thank you guys for everything you've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. And as far as the academic piece, if, if someone would like to, Dr. Gruccio, respond or at this point.
Sure. What we will do is Mr. Santilli or I will reach out to Mrs. Shalom tomorrow and address her concerns. Ms. Santilli, do you have any comments on this?
Now, we will, we will certainly reach out. However, more specifically, just to address the schedule at the middle school level. The, the live sessions are just that. Teachers certainly should be conducting live and or pre-recorded sessions in addition to the other timeframes that we have for small group instruction and virtual help. All those times are not necessarily suggestions. They are there to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students and moving forward with not just providing supplemental support, but really true instruction to continue learning during this time. So we will certainly reach out, but in, in conjunction, we'll also be reaching out to the supervisors and also building principles to make sure that everyone is clear in regards to the middle school schedule.
Thank you very much and thank you for the comment. I, I do think, you know, again, we're doing a fantastic job with our virtual learning, but we are learning as we go. So there's always room for improvement. So we appreciate the comment. And we'll move on to our next call.
Thank you. We do have another caller. Name and address, please.
Sonia Cruz, 207 Egan Avenue, DHT.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's doing well. My comment is again about the seniors and I know that we are all, you know, putting their, you know, the opportunity for them to have their graduations as a priority. And I know you guys are working hard. I reached out and also said that Project Graduation is willing to help out in any form that we could help out. My question is, this is the time that our students are writing scholarship letters and are able to get additional funding. So I was hoping that there is still communication with guidance and the scholarship funders and that the students are still able to have the opportunity to apply for funding. Because we know DHT, you know, DHT rocks and it gets lots of money and I don't want this to be a problem as we move forward.
Is that, is that the end of your public comment? We will?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mrs. Cruz. Dr. Gruccio, I can assure you that Mrs. Elko and Ms. Connor have had discussion about the scholarship process. And I just happened to see an email go back and forth yesterday where they are working on that. So I know they'll be communicating opportunities to our students for application and they will be processing the scholarship, the scholarship applications that are in. And again, part of our planning process is that senior award night. So once we have more direction as to if we're in or out, we will look to do some sort of award ceremony. It could be virtual or it could be something spread out based on the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sonia, for your comment and Dr. Gruccio for that response. And we'll move, we'll move to our next, and that's a very, very important topic, by the way, among many others. And so we'll move to our next call.
Thank you. Public comment. Name and address, please.
Gina Hammond, 5 Woodsberry Road.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I just thought, I understand the pandemic and everyone's rushed and we're trying to learn virtual learning. My problem is, you know, wonderful, they are there for all the students. But the fourth and fifth, or especially the fifth, where my daughter's at, they're not getting fairly instructional teaching the subjects during the live interview. It's just to see if they have help. So I want to know if that was going to change. One teacher does it, another teacher doesn't. So I love the teachers, but it's just frustrating. I work. I'm a nurse. My husband works. Try to get the kids on and then just not learning and I just want to know if that was going to change in the future. If everyone will have a standard schedule.
Thank you. Is that the end of your public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Going to have Mr. Santilli chime in on that. And again, we will be willing to have a discussion over the phone tomorrow if need be.
Yes, we'll, we'll reach out tomorrow so I can be provided some more details. I want to make sure that it was a little broken up in regards to the public comment, unfortunately. So I wanted to make sure that we can discuss a little bit more at length the needs that you're, you know, talking about. So we can make sure that we, you know, get things situated. There is schedules for all the grade levels, P to three, four and five, six, three, and high school. So we'll make sure that we reach out so we can, we can clarify a little further.
So I want to thank you for your comment. I want to thank you for being a nurse. We appreciate you very much for that. And our administration will be in touch with you. And like I said, in response to the last comment, there's always room for improvement in our virtual learning process. And we will continue to do our best with that. But thank you very much for your comment and we will be in touch with you.
I have another caller. Name and address, please.
Dr. Natanti Chestnut Lee, 307 Island Lane, Carver Acres, DHT.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Yes, I would just like the board to know that I want to take the opportunity to commend the teachers at the high school. My daughter has actively been learning since COVID, you know, nineteen. Her teachers, none of her teachers have missed a beat. I have, you know, actually sat in some of her lessons to ensure that learning was going on. And I can say that it definitely is. Her teachers have been very creative from using, you know, white poster boards to write favorite papers, putting it on their closet doors or their walls, instructing their students. They're very interactive, you know, with their Google Meet sessions, their Zoom sessions, as well as instant messaging on the kids through throughout their lessons and reminding them of their excitement. So I do want Ms. Connor to know that she is doing a fantastic job with her high school instructors because my daughter is still learning. And like I said earlier, they have not missed a beat. So hopefully, once the budget, you know, is passed, you know, our parents or some of our community members is funding does have to be cut in particular, you know, areas such as teaching, you know, with, with staff members, that they actually stand up and speak out on that because our teachers are doing a fantastic job. And as parents, I'm sure some of them are really stressed out right now and they understand how difficult it is to be an educator with twenty plus students in a classroom. And they're only dealing with, you know, their, their children. So once again, kudos to the staff members at DHT High School as well as the guidance department. Keep up the fantastic work. And that concludes my comment.
Thank you. Thank you.
We thank you very much for that comment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Chestnut. We appreciate your feedback. And again, it fortifies what we do and you know, we know our teachers work hard and our students are working hard and our parents as well. So thank you for, for the positive.
We haven't had a call since Dr. Chestnut spoke. So if you want to put the phone number up again on the stream and we will be on hold for a complete minute to make sure there's nobody else for public comment. Thank you. Seems to be the longest minute ever. We have another twenty seconds or so waiting for additional public comment because there is a thirty second delay for the live feed. If no other calls come in, we'll be closing public comment. Mr. President, your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone who did call in. And thanks to everyone who is viewing, viewing at home. At this point, I'll ask for comments from board members, please, on any topic that you, that you wish.
Mr. Castellano, I would like to read in these emails that I've received from residents, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, on March sixteenth, I received an email to my Egg Harbor Township email. The resident's name is Leona Conkle and she wrote, I want to express my strongest support for full day kindergarten. You already know many of the reasons that full day kindergarten will be beneficial. These include a less rushed curriculum, a more enjoyable day, which will help kindergartners like school, more time to learn, fewer students needing special education just to get to their grade level, a better experience for students who already perform at or above grade level. Some argue about taxes. All day kindergarten will free up non-working parents of kindergartners to work without paying for additional childcare. It will also alleviate financial stress on those working parents who must pay for full day kindergarten childcare. Both, both of these will increase their tax, the tax base. We already have great schools, but full day kindergarten will make EHT an even more attractive place to live. I believe that we should continue to move forward with full day kindergarten, not just because of the recent coronavirus events and school closures, but because of them. If students are going to be learning at home for extended periods of times of crisis, that in class is all the more precious, that in-class time is all the more precious. Our youngest students need more time with teachers whenever possible to reinforce these basic but vital skills that they are learning and to keep them from regressing when not in class. I have attended some of your school board meetings, but I will not be attending the next few, even if they are open to the public. I am a strong believer in social distancing at this time out of an abundance of caution. Please count this letter as me stepping up to the podium once again to reiterate my support. Sincerely, Leona Conkle. The second email I received on March seventeenth and it was from Hillary Groat Cottage Road, EHT. Good afternoon, Mrs. Byrd. I'm writing today to share my support of full day kindergarten. I believe that full day kindergarten would immensely benefit the students of Egg Harbor Township. After attending several board meetings this year and seeing the presentations by the district, it is clear that while our kids are receiving a quality education and our teachers and admins are working hard, there is more we can do and that starts with creating a strong education foundation for our children. Kindergarten is the foundation of our kids' needs. Additional half-day kindergarten does not serve our district well. It does not serve full-time working parents. It does not serve low-income families and it does not serve our teachers or students well. I look forward to being able to say proudly that EHT has full day kindergarten. You know what? I apologize. That was from Julie Hunter, Winstep Drive. I have it on the same printout. I looked too far, too far down. And the last email that I have, oh no, I have two more. Sorry. March tenth. This is from Hillary Groat, 12 Cottage Road. I am unable to attend board meeting tonight, but wanted to inform you that I support the full day kindergarten program for EHT. I live in EHT and had a son who went through the half-day and really feel he would have benefited from the full day in so many ways. Three hours is not enough time to spend with kindergartners and I think it prepares them for, and I think it doesn't prepare them for first grade. I, and I think it doesn't prepare them for first grade. I have a two-year-old and would like to see her benefit from full day kindergarten. Thank you for your consideration. And the last one, sorry. Good thing I don't have three minutes. March tenth, this was sent from, and I apologize if I mispronounced name, Nish, Nishtha Coley. Uh, and she is an Egg Harbor Township resident. Good afternoon, Mrs. Byrd. My name is Nish. Nishtha Coley and I am a resident of Egg Harbor Township. My home address is forty-five Bartlett Boulevard. I am writing to you to express my strong support for the full day kindergarten program at E H T schools. I have two kids, a second grader and a five-year-old who will be entering kindergarten fall twenty twenty. I am hopeful that the board will vote yes on the proposed full day program as my family be, will be one of those who will be impacted by this decision directly. There are several reasons why I support the program, but here are a few most important ones. Number one, half-day kindergarten is not sufficient to cover curriculum to make kids ready for first grade. Number two, social developmental goals will be better achieved with a full day program. Number three, I currently work full-time and send my younger daughter to preschool for which I pay eight hundred dollars a month. For kindergarten, I can expect tuition at a private school to be upwards of one thousand. This is unaffordable for my family, even with two incomes. Number four, no private school can match the standards, resources, opportunities of a public school system. The children stand to gain not just academically, but holistically by being exposed to specials like music, art, library, et cetera, et cetera. Please don't hesitate from using my name or comments in a public setting to demonstrate community support for the full day kindergarten program. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Nishtha.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. Any other board members? Uh, comments? Comments, questions?
I just want to make a general comment. Uh, certainly appreciative of the I T department. And all those involved in making it uh, it possible for us to have this virtual meeting tonight. And our future meetings, I'm sure we're going to have over the next few weeks. Uh, I think they did an outstanding job. I know it's difficult and I think Chandra and uh, Kevin and everybody involved should be appreciated and thanked. Uh, a special thank you, of course, to Dr. Gruccio. And her outstanding team. And especially to the teachers. Wow, they have done such a great job. It's great to hear all these nice compliments. And you know who I think needs to be thanked? The boys and girls and their parents, because they certainly have done a lot during this entire time and I think it's very trying. I'm trying to teach a class at this time also and all that's at the Stockton uh, college level. Uh, and it's not easy. And I found myself busy every day doing work with individual students and trying to keep up to date with them. Because I have a few that I hope to graduate in a couple of weeks, even though the actual ceremony won't be till the fall. Uh, so I understand a little bit about what the teachers are going through. And I think it's so. E H T of them to be doing such an outstanding job and I'm always so proud of our, our teachers, our paras and our entire staff. So the parents and the boys and girls deserve a big pat on the back. And I know we're going to continue doing what we have to do, but I just had to get my two cents in and thank everybody. And thank our fellow board members for being together tonight. And hopefully we have a good meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delbarca. Any, any other board members? Please.
Uh, this is Mr. Price. I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Okay, I would just like to thank everybody as well. I mean, this is quite a um, a learning process that we're going through tonight. Starting to get the hang of it now. And um. It's great to see everybody. I appreciate too the input from the phone calls. And um. Looking forward to um. The meeting next week. Hopefully we have a nice meeting and um. Everything goes well with the technology, so that's my comments for this evening. Good night and stay safe, everybody and stay well. Thank you.
Any other, any other board members? Comments, questions?
There's Ms. Floyd. I just had a, a comment as well. Um, I just wanted to say when I heard, you know, the many calls that we did get, you know, some, some with concerns and. Questions which are, which are valid concerns and questions. I think what stood out to me the most was. The many comments about uh, the staff members and just how the township, Egg Harbor Township, just kind of rallied together and it came together and did what we needed to do. To kind of get through um. This pandemic that we are experiencing and not as just as a country or a county, but just as a whole wor, the world. Um, and Mrs. Wazin made a statement. She said, even though this is a, you know, pandemic. She said, you know, there's something positive that came out of it. You know, and she said how the relationship between teachers and parents. And I think it really, I'm just hoping that this situation, we come out of it more empathetic. And I feel like we all had opportunity, whether it's parents or teachers, to walk in each other's shoes and to know what it feels like um. To be, you know, to take on the challenges someone else may have to take on, uh, whether it's teaching. Whether it's, you know, trying to teach and be a parent at the same time. I know for myself, it it's not easy because I'm concerned about my school building, my students at my school and my own children. And I definitely want to give a shout out to my children's teachers. Uh, we got a postcard from my daughter's teacher. Uh, we get phone calls. If if there's an assignment that wasn't turned in, I get an email or, you know, they pick the phone up and call me and let me know and they've been in communication, so. Um, I just want to thank Ms. Chisco, Ms. Ryder at Miller School. And Ms. Widow, Ms. Blaine, Mr. Medica. Mr. Goodwin, Ms. Fuller. Ms. Fenton, um, their teachers at, on the orange team at um. Uh, Fernwood. So hopefully I didn't miss anybody, anyone's name, but just to thank all of them for all that they do. You all know middle school children are very unique and they have a lot of personality. But I just wanted to say thank you to them um. To have the opportunity to give them a shout out and to tell them I appreciate all that they do for my children.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert Floyd. Are there any other comments for board members? Hearing, seeing none, I'm going to ask administration. Any comments?
Mr. Castellano, I'd just like to reiterate, um, you know, the great things that I heard tonight and. As well as the concerns, um, you know, we will, we will, we will address them and I too, I was very proud of our teachers, our staff. Um, and and all the departments and that we have in our school district and, you know, in the, in the beginning of my. Uh, term as superintendent, I said, you know, we're all about building relationships and um, as Ms. Gilbert Floyd said and Mrs. Wazin said. Um, this truly is a time where we have come together and embraced each other and shown the love, compassion and passion. Um, and um, I have to really highlight that and and we all have to just take a sit back and appreciate. Not, not only the great things that we have going on academically. Um, but the relationship piece and that's, that's what's important right now for everybody in this world. And um, just knowing that we have the care and love out there, I I can go to bed at night and uh, and rest well. So thank you to everyone. Thank you to the Board of Education for your support. Um, let's continue staying the course and doing all the great things uh, that we do for students. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, Dr. Gruccio, thank you and thank you to your um. Administrative team. And I'm saying that from a parent's perspective and I'm also saying that as a person who works in a school system. And I just had to say this to the public and I, you know. It is not an easy task. To run a school. Let alone a school district of Egg Harbor Township's size, the largest in Atlantic County. It is not easy. And to be throwing this curveball and to jump in there and get things done. I'm just saying, I appreciate it and I, and I know it's not easy and it's a difficult task and um, your administrative team. You know, really jumped in. All hands on deck, so I appreciate that and I know a lot of times, I'm pretty sure you probably don't hear this, but thank you. Mrs. Santilli, thank you. Mr. Mr. Naya, thank you. Um, so yeah, being in a leadership position is not an easy job, so I just want to say I see you and I, you know, I thank you and I'm sure, I'm sure all the other board members feel that way. So.
Thank you, and that's a thanks from all of us. Appreciate it.
Yes, I would certainly echo that as well. Uh, any other comment? I guess at this point, I'm going to take uh, just the opportunity again to thank everyone for participating. Uh, everyone uh, who was part of the uh, meeting, uh, those who are viewing. These are unprecedented and difficult times. And I believe this district and and the board. Will continue to do the very best we can to balance all the needs that are in front of us. We have to take care of our students. We have to be mindful of our taxpayers and this is not an easy time. But again. Being E H T proud and E H T strong, I know we're going to get through this and we're going to come out the other end stronger. So I want to thank everyone again for participating. And uh. At this point, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Everyone will just signify raising their hands, aye, and we will be adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
Good night.